Well, no, there's only three people.
Oh, okay.
We need two out of three.
Okay.
You're recording? Okay, uh, Small Cities Committee meeting is now officially open. It's Monday, December 4th, 2023. We're in the City Hall Auditorium at 6:18 PM. Uh, present, we have Councilman Stephen Iveyne and Councilman Drake Waldron. Uh, so we have a quorum. So we'll go to our agenda. Number one, 42 Pithian Avenue. Project number 143 SC 1801-18. Vote to approve an additional $2,961.84 at 42 Pithian Avenue for the replacement of the front entry door and storm door and one replacement window. Excuse me. The current Small Cities loans total $30,919.55. This will increase the total amount of the loans to $33,881.39, and the mortgage will be modified to reflect the increase pending City Council approval. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve.
Okay, a motion is made by Councilman Iveyne. I second. All right, uh, discussion.
Well, what, what is the interest rate?
They don't tell us that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, damn. What am I thinking? Right. Yeah, they get a 0% loan. Free loan.
Yeah.
Until the house changes.
Ownership.
And we have a lien attached to that house. We, so if, if, if she had a mortgage, this woman, we would have second position to the mortgage.
Okay.
If not, we might be in first position. But once it's sold or passes to somebody else and they actually change the name in the city records, then it has to be paid at that point.
Okay.
But no, 0%. So it could be a lifetime free loan until.
Yeah. Is this the city arranging for a loan?
It's actually a government program.
Okay, and it's, it's run by the state.
By the state. We get a, a block amount of money every year. And we have an outside company that runs the program for us.
Yeah.
So they take the applications and Dan's involved too. And, uh, they decide who gets it. You have to qualify by income.
Mm-hmm.
Or, well, income's the big one.
Well, strictly you can wait.
But you could be a, a property owner, and if you're renting to low-income people, you could qualify for one of these loans. But in that case, you would have a, a low interest. You would actually be paying an interest rate, but it's pretty low. It's, you know, compared to what you get from a bank.
Yeah.
So some, uh, you know, people that rent out multifamily places have taken advantage.
Yeah.
Of our program.
Are, are we fully utilizing the assets there?
We're using everything? All the assets?
Is, is there more available assets loaned out more?
We loaned it out again.
Yeah. Yes, it was passive.
But that block of money we get is good for a certain amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
And then we apply for another one in the future, and very often we get more money.
Yeah.
It's from the federal government, isn't it? The money, and then the state runs out of them. There's been times when we had to hustle to loan out the money.
Yeah.
Because if we didn't do it by a certain date, it went back.
Oh. Brandon.
So they go, they'll take it back. And it's like, well, it's not money. We want to keep it here.
What's going to happen? Is, is there an opportunity to increase the total assets that?
What's up, Bob?
Say about that? We, we have a lot of vacant homes in town. Oh, the homeowner. I went to the Catholic churches and they haven't put up church buildings. And, and we got, we got two chamois. As the members. Oh, it's a nice infusion. You know, boilers and improving those efficiencies.
Yeah. Looking to us.
Okay, so. Question? One? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, it passes. Okay, item two, business by members. Vote to consider business by members. Any other business?
No, no, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, so we don't need a motion on this. So, and how about a motion to adjourn?
I, uh, motion.
Motion by Councilman Iveyne, second by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thirty, so I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Councilmen to order. Uh, for the record, today is Monday, December 4th, 2023, in the City Hall Auditorium. Uh, and participating, this is a hybrid meeting. So for the record, participating in person, I have Councilman Waldron, Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman, um, sorry.
Spino.
Councilwoman Spino, um, Councilman Cavanero and Councilman Oliver. Uh, we do not have, I think Councilwoman Ruette is not on Zoom, but we do have a quorum. So I can call this meeting to order before we begin the agenda. Could we kindly stand and pledge the flag? Just for the record, I didn't forget her name. I'm just accustomed to calling her a commissioner. All right, so item number one on the agenda this evening, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, Subsection E of the City Council and WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Or excuse me, all in favor? Any opposed? We are open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from November 20th, 2023.
No moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then.
One abstention for the record, actually, two abstentions for the record. That would be Councilwoman Spino and I'm assuming Councilman Iveyne.
Sorry. Oh, uh, your point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I wanted to add a discussion item to tonight's agenda, a brief one.
Okay.
For the purpose of an update on, given the, uh, last. Emotionalism of the last meeting regarding the homeless situation, I would just like to hear what, um, what has transpired since then as, you know, in terms of, uh, trying to resolve this problem. Just an update basically on discussions.
So could that be done with, uh, business by mayor and members? Under item number nine? Can that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. We'll do that under nine.
Yeah, just the discussion.
Okay, sounds good.
Do we need to vote on it, or?
No, we'll just take it up under item nine.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, again, for the record, that vote was, um, all in favor and abstaining were Councilwoman Spino and Councilman Iveyne. Uh, moving into item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Keith Farrell to the Fair Rent Commission for a two-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025.
I moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions or comments on this appointment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to uh, utilize the NASPO Master Agreement number 164719 for the purchase of 47 body armor carriers from Fairfield Uniform Company of Bridgeport in the amount of $43,565, as further explained in Chief Baldwin's letter dated October 30th, pending Board of Public Safety approval. This purchase will be funded from $21,000, uh, from a training grant and the remainder from the police capital account under body armor.
No moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none.
Can I just ask a question on that? Is it, what is, what are the police now using in terms of body armor? Why would this be necessary?
Uh, body armor is, um, uh, rotated. It has a, a lifespan. So this is replacing body armor that's probably ready to be replaced.
Okay, so it's part of a natural cycle to?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, on the recommendation of the Small Cities Committee, I'll entertain a motion to approve an additional $2,961.84 for the replacement of the front entry door, storm door, and one replacement window at 42 Pithian Avenue. Uh, the current Small Cities loans totals $30,919.55. This will increase the total amount of the loans to $33,881.39, and the mortgage will be modified to reflect the increase. Do I have that motion?
No moved.
Thank you, I heard Councilman Waldron, I heard Councilwoman Spino. Uh, and the floor is open. Any other comments from Small Cities Chair?
Yeah, this is a, a necessary add-on to the project for, uh, personal hardship by the owners. So, uh, and it fits into the, the amount they're eligible to borrow, plus, uh, they have plenty of equity, and it's just going to be rolled right into their mortgage. So, for the, the loan, so we're good. So I would recommend that we vote for it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed on the interim Corporation Council's memo dated December 4th, 2023.
No moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, and, um, I thought I heard Councilman Cavanero over here. Questions or comments on the list? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on this dated December 4th, 2023.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, questions or comments on the list? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
No moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, okay, we have deputy, or excuse me, the treasurer, Deanne Farley. Anything this evening? Anything from the city clerk's office? Uh, I don't see any department heads on the Zoom call, so we'll move into item nine. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
No moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll start on this side of the room. Anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
Uh, no, I was going to ask the same thing Paul is, so.
Okay. All right, Councilman Cavanero.
Uh, already asked and answered by Mayor about an update. Homeless situation, that's all.
About the meeting from last.
Right.
Go around.
So, um, so asked for a discussion and, um, specific, because I think it does fall under business by the mayor and members. So your specific question is just an update?
Yeah, just.
Okay.
There were so many things flying around.
There were.
I, we were all taken off.
Yeah, and how, especially anything that might relate to how the City Council might be involved in this going forward, so we're not flat-footed.
Yeah. So, um, so homeless, uh, and the, um, winter sheltering of homeless. Keep in mind that what we're discussing, um, at the, um, what was being presented in public, uh, discussion at the last meeting was, uh, the winter sheltering for, um, our homeless population in the city of Torrington. So by way of history, um, for decades, uh, winter sheltering was always, um, undertaken. It was Project Overflow. It was undertaken by a, uh, very dedicated and, um, uh, sensitive group of volunteers that worked with the area churches to open up those churches during the coldest winter months and allow the homeless to sleep within their basements or their, um, their excess spaces. During the pandemic in, uh, 2020, the state of Connecticut decided that they needed to, um, get the account of the homeless population, bring them into sheltering so that they can test them and vaccinate them. So this was a way of not only um, providing a much-needed resource, uh, when it came to winter sheltering, but also, um, to, um, curtail the spread of the pandemic. In doing so, the state of Connecticut provided grant funds. As soon as those grant funds were made available.
On a city-by-city basis.
On a city-by, yep, yeah. By anybody who, um, undertook or agreed to accept the grant funds to open winter sheltering, uh, then we became a part of the 211 system. 211 system, for those, uh, that don't know what that is, it's, uh, if you are in need of housing, um, or housing support, you dial 211, and the state of Connecticut, um, usually provides some direction on where they can, um, send you. So, uh, in the winter of 2020, 2021, the first winter sheltering occurred at the old St. Mary's School, which was, um, closed and empty at the time. Uh, that shelter was, um, uh, moderately used. I think we ended up with slightly over 20 homeless people that winter. The following winter, the same premises were used again, and, uh, the homeless population did grow. Um, again, utilizing the 211 system now, instead of the local volunteers and local churches housing, we are now part of the 211 system, and people from other municipalities and other communities can now be placed in the city of Torrington, which did happen. There's a, a, a pretty, um, significant number of people that ended up being placed up here. That grew, almost doubled the second year. Third year, the location, now, the state is continuing to fund these. The third year, the location was put in, uh, a, um, piece of property that Hartford Healthcare owns in Winston. And I don't have the counts. I can't tell you if it grew, if it was, uh, steady, but, um, yes.
It would have been 2022, 2023.
So 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23, correct. Yes. Now we're here, 23, 24 is what we're talking about. So, uh, Winston is no longer an option. It's back to Torrington. You know, and every year I participate in these phone calls. I'm working with the, uh, housing diversion, um, expert that the city of Torrington accepted grant funds to support the housing diversion specialist. Uh, working with all of the, um, agents. It's, uh, Deidra from Fish, it's Nancy Cannavale from The Gathering Place, uh, and, uh, a litany of other, um, service providers in the area. Uh, down to the wire, uh, before Thanksgiving, there was no location, no viable location, right to the wire. And it was the week before Thanksgiving that, um, all of a sudden, the Northwest Hills Church became, um, a, uh, a place that a couple of, um, members of this committee, uh, had been working sort of, uh, offline, trying to, um, trying to negotiate this. So, uh, Northwest Hills Church graciously, um, stepped up. Uh, we were informed on Thursday, the 16th, that the church had agreed to open their doors to this population. And in that meeting, I cautioned the volunteers that were working that there were two schools in close proximity, and that communication must be commenced with the schools. Uh, and even went so far as to provide the name and phone number of the principal of, um, the, uh, Catholic school. So, um, that was on Thursday. Uh, Saturday morning, the newspaper article, um, hit the newspapers. Uh, the Catholic Church community, um, became increasingly concerned. They, um, felt that they hadn't had any communication on this. And that is when they showed up at the council meeting on that Monday, which was the 20th, 20th. So that's the history. That's everything from, you know, 2020 to 2023. Where are we now?
Yeah, just to clarify something you just said. Just so I understand, the, the mechanism, so again, once again, the city is now interfacing with the state, and it's kind of murky, seems, I mean, the state, the state under 21, the 211 umbrella gives us money, gives the city of Torrington money?
No, the city of Torrington is not the recipient of these grants.
Who, who is?
So the, um, actually, it's called the Housing Collective, is, uh, the agency that receives the funds. The, um, agency then works with, um, the service providers, the YMCA, Greenwood's Counseling. Uh, I know that, um, Fish and The Gathering Place, um, Hartford Healthcare are all a part of the, um, the, the efforts to make sure that these, um, these winter sheltering are full service. So.
From the state side?
Yes.
So.
City receives no money, and we are not a fiduciary.
Right, so the, the, in, in my, from my perspective, it's like the misperception.
Yes.
Is that the state is working with the city of Torrington's government to administer the distribution of these funds in an appropriate way, and that's not what's hap, that's not the way it's set up. It's set up from the state to some, some ad hoc agency that, and, and the follow-up with how that money is spent and used, that's between the state and the agency, right?
Correct.
Mayor, the city council.
Has nothing to do with us.
Wait, correct. That is correct.
I think that's, well, it's certainly confusing to me and was confusing.
Certainly.
The, the vast majority of people in Torrington hear about the problem.
Yes, I agree.
You know, hence the, the feeling of a disconnect when this roomful of people comes here to ask us to do something, and it's not within our jurisdiction to do any of that, the way it's currently set up.
That is correct.
Oh, it works in other cities, for instance?
It is.
Bridgeport and, there, there's some ad hoc group of people of social services that gets money from the state and they figure out how to spend it?
Yes. Yeah, a vast majority of the municipalities function that way.
And therefore, the, um, the, uh, the monitoring of how those monies, if, if it's being done effectively or not, that all lands on the state as well then, right?
That is correct. Yes.
But i- i- in the meantime, though, we, we do not have an overnight shelter in place, is my understanding. So.
So the update is, uh, that, um, and again, this is not any different than, um, other municipalities. So when we were informed that it was going to most likely be the Northwest Hills Church, uh, and then, um, every, the lack of communication and the heightened sense of awareness that this is, uh, going to happen, it, uh, came to our attention that the, um, organizations that were taking the lead on this had not presented the request to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, he- here is the one area that the city of Torrington does have some jurisdiction. Uh, this is a change of use. This is, um, a church. It is, um, now, um, seeking to function as a, um, residential shelter. So, um, the planning and zoning city planner came to my office on Monday morning. Mind you, all of this is happening Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, Monday, uh, the, um, city planner comes to my office and says, we have a problem. They haven't come for zoning approval. That's a special exception. We must do this. So I immediately communicated the same to the, um, lead agencies, um, particularly the church and, um, and John Simon Selly from Greenwood's Counseling. And they organized themselves. They got their application together. They did submit it to the planning and zoning, to the city planner's office. Uh, Planning and Zoning met on the 29th. That was last Wednesday. They did establish a public hearing to occur on December 13th. There will be a public hearing, and that again is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on whether or not that is the appropriate location for a shelter. Nobody in this room on Monday, including council members, including myself, say that this is not the right thing to do. This is absolutely the right thing to do. The question is, is it the right place to do it?
Correct, I get that.
So Planning and Zoning is the commission that is designed to do that. There's no influence from the council, which is essentially the legislative body of the, of the city. Um, Planning and Zoning is non, you know, it's, it's supposed to be a board that has no political leanings or influence. They make decisions based on the regulations, you know, and utilizing the public, um, input. So that's where we are. That is supposed to happen December 13th. I have been made aware that there are potentially two other locations, uh, one of which has submitted another application for the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission to consider. And there's a third one that I just learned of today that may also be applying.
Good, good.
Correct.
Their discussion, I know this, this is, this, this is not the first priority, but are, are there ongoing discussions, at least at this point, Mayor, in, in having the kind of, the follow-up to all of this with the state, since, you know, this, while it doesn't, while it doesn't fall under our purview or yours, as, as the mayor or the city council to deal with the issue, it certainly does impact us, and in, in the amount of time and effort and, and, you know, twisting and turning that your office and by extension, our city council, to involve in this process that we're not involved in, but part, is the state in any way offering any solutions for how to do this better next year, so that within, so that there are some, some kind of statutory guidelines for appropriate and probably, you know, um, the kind of ad hoc committees that exist in all these cities, they all, they all march to the same drummer, and it's just much more, is, is that conversation happening?
So, um, the, the, the long-term solution to the winter sheltering is, um, it is to get off of the cycle of finding a place every winter.
Mm-hmm.
Because what do we know? So St. Mary's, uh, school and church were sold, and there's a proposed housing development happening over there. Uh, the Hartford Healthcare, uh, premises in Winston is going to be redeveloped. Uh, many of the empty spaces that pose some potential for housing, uh, um, sheltering, I should say, are homeless during the winter, are under contract, ready to be developed or, um, already developed. So the, the solution is to find a permanent location that these social care providers can all agree, this is the location, acquire their property, staff it properly, and make this a regular annual event. Or go back to the old system, which was Project Overflow, where the churches are rotating, because in the past, how this worked is the churches rotated. It was never more than 30 days. Each, each church took a 30-day period of time during the winter. It was never more than thirty days. Each, each church took a thirty-day period of time during the winter and rotated the, the homeless throughout there. And this was almost every church. It was the Lutheran Church at the top of Charles Street. It was Trinity. It was Center Congregational. Even these churches, their building uses have changed. Center Congregational no longer has the space. They turned that space into a preschool. So everything changes. The only way for us to get ahead of this or for there to be a more permanent solution, first off, the real permanent solution is housing. Connect them to housing. Not connecting them to a winter shelter, not connecting them to a shelter. It is connecting them to housing. So that's really the solution, but what do we know? The, the truth is, there will probably always be a homeless population. There are some people that are just never going to, you know, settle into regular housing. So I do know that there are a number, at least two organizations, that are right now talking about property acquisition with winter sheltering being a component of that. And obviously, this is a big nut. I mean, you want to, property acquisition is not inexpensive, especially with the property values escalating the way that they have since the pandemic. So it will require some grant funds, which means the state will once again probably have some influence on how that shelter functions and how it utilizes the two-one-one system.
I understand, mayor. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. And I would just like to put my final two cents would be judging from my many years of experience now with how the state interfaces with the local municipalities. I would just like to know and to, and, and to express my desire that as these conversations go forward, that we, the city council and the mayor, make sure that we hold the state accountable, not just, if you're going to institute winter sheltering, to the degree that there are, they are referring people to Torrington, pushing people to Torrington, that once the winter sheltering is over, and these people are now not in those situations, that all of the attendant costs that accrue to this population in terms of some kind of, again, sustained housing and feeding, et cetera, et cetera, that the state makes good, you know, that portion as well, you know?
Yes.
Do you understand my point?
I do. I do understand your point, and I think that it's, it's an important point to make. The city of Torrington is under fifty thousand in population. It, as you know, being under fifty thousand in population, we don't get any federal funding. We get none.
You can use the term.
Yes, yeah. So needless to say, the, you know, the, those burdens of providing those resources, if the state is not doing the grant funding, it falls to the taxpayers.
Yes, yes, we are aware of that, and that's where this question is, or this comment is coming from.
I hear it, and I.
You, I guarantee, I would almost guarantee that you would get full support from the city council and, and pushing that, that perspective onto the state, like, you know.
Yeah.
To do this.
I would also add and remind the council, when we got our American Rescue Plan money, what we, we recognized, now, this was in the height of the twenty-twenty, dealing with the winter sheltering, and I had been having a number of conversations. I'd been through that first winter of making phone calls with realtors and anybody that we could think of, any empty building. We were making cold calls to these property owners to find a location. I knew that there had to be a more permanent solution, so I did bring to the council, and, and if you go back and look at those, those budget proposals, I did propose to the council that we use some of the American Rescue Plan money, first and foremost, to encourage the social care providers to collaborate, consolidate. There are economies of scale when you're co-located, right?
Yep.
And we also put a little bit of money in there for implementation. So if you could get a couple of these agencies to work together, find, you know, a common facility or common campus, I'm not suggesting they each give up their, you know, their own mission, but if there's a common location, there would be funds for implementation. So we still have those funds in the American Rescue Plan funding stream, which is what I keep reminding these agencies every time I'm on the call, is let's stop chasing the temporary location. Let's focus on the permanent location and coordinated efforts.
But i- in the meantime, we have an immediate crisis that it's already cold. It's been cold all of November, and we, we don't have a housing solution, and there is no guarantee that Northwest Community Hills is going to be approved by Planning and Zoning. Is there anything we can do now to address having an overnight warming shelter to accommodate those that are currently outside in the cold?
The municipality?
Yes.
No. There, so I know a number of people have asked about our municipal buildings. The Armory was one building that I was being pressed to activate. For, as many of you know, six nights a week, the Armory is used for basketball. We have hundreds of kids that are playing basketball well past nine o'clock in that building. That is not an option. Co-Park, it was requested if Co-Park could be activated. I did, in fact, have a meeting with the Co-Park Subcommittee and Park and Rec Commission. Keep in mind, Co-Park is a specific gift exactly held by trust. It was a gift.
It's owned by a trust, and.
There's, correct. There are restrictions.
Whatever we want with it, and that's not the case. Sorry.
No, thank you. I appreciate the, the fact that this is more common knowledge. Now, what did I learn over the last three years that we had been doing the winter sheltering and being on these calls every Thursday afternoon for ninety minutes? Is for some reason in December, the demands of the winter sheltering are not great. They're, I don't know whether it's because people are, you know, in the holiday mode, and they're more tolerant of family. So when we look at the numbers of who's accessing the shelters in the month of December, those numbers are very low. However, in January, they, they blossom. So I would suggest that, you know, the organizations, and I know the two-one-one system is out there. I know that The Gathering Place is working on this. We do have that housing diversion specialist. That person actually gets on the call when somebody calls and says, I have no place to sleep tonight. They actually help them. They counsel them through, all right, let's call your brother. Let's call your, you know, your, your niece. Let's, they actually physically work with them to connect them to some safe, warm place to stay. I don't know how many are sleeping out in the cold right now. I have another call on Thursday. I can certainly get that, that count. But the organizations, the Housing Collective, the YMCA, they do have funding. I guess if worst-case scenario is, they could use some of that funding to provide hoteling. There's an option.
Have we asked the Co-Park Commission if it could be utilized?
I did, yes.
Is there any other city buildings that, that could be used, such as this outdoor?
I would also add that I also reached out to, see, municipalities don't do homeless sheltering. There's an inherent risk. Buildings that have IT and security controls make it a little bit trickier to activate any controlled environment where employees are during the day, you know, trying to activate it for another purpose in the evening. I did reach out to Kirma, which is our LAP provider. I did ask them if there were any recommendations as to whether or not this could happen. There was not strong support for us to undertake this, for that very reason. Inherent risk of damage to the property, compromised security in any of our IT systems, and of course, the population itself. Because we've accepted state money, because, excuse me, because the state money is being used, this is a low-barrier facility, which means anybody that presents under the influence or has a criminal record cannot be denied access. So I, I would say no, that the municipal buildings are not an option for those reasons.
Now, even though the state is dispersing the assets, it originates with federal funding, and they have the low-barrier requirements, correct?
They create the low-barrier requirements. Prior to the pandemic, the churches were all able to turn away somebody that presented, impaired or under the influence. That is no longer an option for them.
And that was all privately funded?
Volunteers.
Okay.
Absolutely. It is a, a pain point to anybody for a lot of reasons, but those funds, and I don't know, we were expecting two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. I believe the amount of funds that were being released was far exceeded that two-hundred-and-forty thousand. So I don't know if the hoteling is an option with those funds that are available. I will also say that we have been told repeatedly that these funds will not be available next year. So whatever we do this year, we know that there's going to have to be a, a very big pivot as to how this is going to operate in the future with no funding.
Answer.
No answer. No. You're welcome. Other questions on that point? Did you have anything else this evening that you wanted? That's it. All right, Councilwoman Spino.
My only question is, the public hearing for Planning and Zoning is December thirteenth. If it is approved, what is the soonest date that somebody, they'd be able to open?
It's a great question. I would imagine, I would imagine the next day. It, it's certainly a question I could pose to the city planner and get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Iving.
I, I believe a second application has been submitted on Friday for Trinity Church. So I'm hopeful that if Northwest Community Hills is not approved, that Trinity Church would be seeing that they are already managing that population in Community Kitchen, and has been a shelter in the past. So barring any unforeseen circumstances, I just hope we could expedite that application and make it available, as long as we're in, in the guidelines of the Planning and Zoning rules.
Anything else this evening? Just that? Okay. Councilman Waldron.
Oh, no, nothing for me, except welcome to our two new members.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, we'll move into item ten. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public to comment on agenda items only. Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public for agenda items. Seeing and hearing none, there being no further business before the board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilman Oliver, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for going over that. Really.